This conference will now be recorded.
It is now 6:02 PM and we are going to begin our regular council meeting of December the ninth. We have a full house quorum, every council member is here, and we're going to go ahead and go into our executive session. And we will be back at seven o'clock for the rest of our regular meeting. So we are closing our regular meeting to go into executive session at 6:02 PM. Huh, right, I'm just gonna let Carmen sit down. Okay, we are looking at executive session, section 551071, consultation with attorney, section 551072, deliberation regarding real property, section 551.074, personnel, section 551.087, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. So with that said, we will reconvene into our executive session. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
It is now 7:12, we apologize for not making our seven o'clock deadline, we're working on making that better. It is time to resume our regular session of the December ninth Rome City Council meeting. It is now 7:13 and we are reconvening and Cynthia, we have you down for, well, let's go first, with discussion and any necessary action as a result of the executive session. I have an announcement to make, we are, as a city, Shayna Odom will become our new city secretary effective tomorrow on the thing, and there'll be some other shakeups within the office, everybody is certainly on board with it and we look forward to working with all of y'all. Yes, ma'am?
I make a motion that we approve that nomination.
Do we hear a second?
A second to that motion?
I'm in favor.
Okay, now let's have, we've had a motion, a second, let's take a vote. A voice vote, is everybody in favor? Aye. Okay, so the motion passed, Shayna is our new secretary, beginning in the morning, so give her what far, you know. And there, right now, there will be no other changes that are obvious going on. Okay, Cynthia, we've got you down for invocation.
Father God, we just come before you today with grateful and thankful hearts in this season of giving, when you have given your son. Lord, I pray that you would give each one of us here a heart of giving, that we would look for opportunities to give to those around us. Giving is the spirit of Christmas. Lord, I just thank you also that we live in a, in a country where we have self-government and we can govern ourselves. I thank you for each one here that has committed their time and energy and effort, the mayor and council, to serve the cities of Rome and the citizens of Rome. I thank you for all the city staff that are committed to public service and service above self and service to the citizens of Rome. And Lord, I thank you for all the citizens that take the time to attend these public meetings and participate in our local government. It only works when we have informed engagement, so we thank you that, for each citizen that is represented here today. Father God, I just pray that you would, during the rest of this meeting, that you would help us to agree, to disagree, and to interact respectfully, and in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Michelle, do our pledge of allegiance. Leanne, do we have public presentations?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have two that have signed up to speak. Cynthia Heard and also Mike Gujion, and I'm sorry if I've just butchered your name, I apologize for that. Those two have signed up to speak publicly, and then I have a comment to read after that. So just kind of lay out the ground rules for this. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and when there's 30 seconds remaining, I'll notify you so that you'll know that your time is almost up, so you can conclude your comments. So Cynthia Heard is the first one to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I am Cynthia Heard, property owner at 800 US Highway 287, and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the owners of The Motel 6, The Shell Station, Rome Liquor, Rome Family Medical Practice, Rome Dentistry, and Loves. They have granted me permission to speak on their behalf. We want to share our concerns regarding the wastewater rate increase. The owners understand wastewater rates have not been increased in over 20 years, and there is a need to catch up, to maintain infrastructure and infines the city has been impacted with. But how can 20 years of adjustments be resolved overnight? During the council meeting on May 27th, the rate increase was passed without due consideration and discussion given to business and property owners. We would ask for explanation of how the commercial rates were determined. My water bill went from an average of $350 to almost $800 a month. Another business owner pays around $2,000 a month, and their bill jumped to over $4,200 a month. This is an increase of $5,500 to over $30,000 per year in additional expenses for this business. Many of the properties have multiple water meters, so the maximum rate is incurred multiple times. Owners are receiving an astronomical 143% increase on our water bills. This is not a fair or reasonable rate of adjustment. Property owners will have no choice but to pass on these expenses to their business owners and consumers. Many of the businesses in Rome rent their space, and they don't pay water, the owners do. It's these businesses, many of them being service providers with no product to sell, will have to absorb these increases, and they may suffer. Rome stands to lose these businesses because they can't raise their prices too quickly without jeopardizing the viability of their own business. I'm talking about businesses like Y Style Salon, H&R Block, Fort Worth Brief Therapy, Right at Home, El Cezanne Restaurant, Mr. Jim's. These are some of the local owners that impact this community. We support you in your challenging task of managing revenue for the city, but we advocate for the reexamination of this process. It took two decades to get here, let's give business owners the same opportunity to make their adjustments in a just amount of time. We would ask for the council to consider an incremental percentage increase over the next three years for wastewater, which would increase the city's revenue, but also allow property owners the opportunity to maintain, prepare, and absorb the rate increases without a detrimental effect on those businesses who serve our community. Thank you for your time and for hearing our concern.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Gujion?
Hi, my name is Mike Gujion, my wife Becky Gujion with me. We live at 217 Cheyenne Trail in the Chisholm Creek subdivision, which is a unique neighborhood because it shares two city limits between Rome and Newark with about 50 houses in the subdivision. Becky and I have lived there for about five years now. I want to thank you, Mayor, for, and the city council for allowing me to speak today, but I want to share some of my concerns about the recent project that I was denied by the Planning and Zoning Committee. On Monday, December 6th, I presented our plans and requested permission to build a carport in the northeast corner of my backyard. The Planning and Zoning Committee, to the Planning and Zoning Committee during the public hearing. There were two carports presented to the zoning committee during that public hearing on Monday. The first to be reviewed was my request. After presentation, after my presentation, there was two discussions. The first about the zoning requirements, which was agreed to by the PNC and myself. The second discussion was about, this would be the first carport in the neighborhood. After final discussion of the meeting, one of the PNC members made a motion to deny the request because it was the first one in the neighborhood. After the motion was denied, the committee voted to deny my request. In fact, it is not the first one in the Chisholm Creek neighborhood, it is the second, however, the first is in the Newark city limits on our main street in our subdivision. The second carport presented by a Rome citizen was presented to the PNC. After discussion, the PNC member, same member, made the motion to accept because there was already several carports in their neighborhood. I understand the word "carport" has a negative connotation, which may be true years ago, but in today's environment, cover structures have evolved to be used in many applications in place of the four of all structures. In fact, the city covered structure in the Veterans Memorial is all, and it's also highlighted in the city homepage. My proposed design would have been very similar to the structure covered at the memorial. If the statement is true, first in the neighborhood is criteria of denial. I'm asking the city council, or the Planning and Zoning Commission, to make the statement public knowledge. This would help other Rome citizens and citizens in the city.
Thirty seconds.
And city administration from wasting time and money on permits. If it's not the criteria, then I would like to understand why it was denied. In summary, since I have two city officials in my neighborhood, actually on the same street, one is on the city council, the other is in the Planning and Zoning Committee, and both oppose my carport proposal, so I'm not here to request the city to accept my proposal, but to help define the PNC unwritten requirements, the first one in the neighborhood will be denied. So thank you very much, Mayor, City Council.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, then, Mayor, the last that we have is a statement to be read from Lisa Ann Wilson, 240 West First Street, Rome, Texas. "My opinion, why would a sitting council person keep belittling residents through either social media or a letter to the editor of the local newspaper, as well as in council meetings? Does he not know he was elected by these people?"
Leanne.
Leanne, you're, hold on a second, we muted you.
Go back to where it says, "in my opinion," and Sean is doing his technical stuff, we, all of a sudden, we lost you.
Okay, I'm sorry, are you hearing me now?
Yes, go for it.
Okay, I'm not sure where we, where we got disconnected. I'm gonna back up just a little bit here. During the recent bond election, the majority of people spoke and voiced their opinion. They overwhelmingly voted no. However, this particular individual pointed out that the no voters did not respect first responders. That simply was not the case. Seriously now, he's psychic and can read minds as to why the citizens voted no. This is very egotistical and condescending and presumptuous, especially coming from an elected official. In my opinion, he should remain quiet with his personal opinion and remember his position to represent all voters, no matter what their personal votes are at the polls. He has attacked his constituents for their freedom of choice, like the saying goes, your vote, your choice. Clearly, he does not play well with others, only looking out for his personal agenda instead of Rome citizens. His attitude and arrogance is unbelievable. To see the city, the council person infer that the day he and his family moved to Rome, the earth stood still and everything was made right with our city. Clearly, this is not the case. Fast forward seven or eight years later, we are still in a large amount of debt, roads are bad, water and sewer still has problems, and the buildings are still dilapidated. Please do not believe his smoking mirrors and dog and pony show. He is correct that there is an upcoming election in 2022, and growth is coming, but we do not, but we do need people to step up and run for office that will be responsible and frugal for Rome. The local government of recent, past, in my opinion, have not done their due diligence in looking out for our pocketbooks. Please, council members, stop insulting your voters and give credit to those who want to make Rome a better place to live without overpowering debt. His comment, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." This is true, please run for office and change the dynamics of our city. And it's signed, Lisa Ann Wilson. And Mayor, that concludes the comments.
Okay, thanks, Leanne.
Yes, ma'am.
For y'all that are sitting out here and you wonder who this nice lady is on video, she is our temporary city secretary, working through a temporary agency, and hey, technical stuff is wonderful, but that's why all this is happening. So we're going to move on now, and anybody here that signed up for public presentations?
We already done one.
Right, okay, but there's no one here in the audience that signed up, okay. So we're moving on now. As you know, we can't take our action on anything like that, but we can certainly hear it and consider it. We're moving now on to announce for, for myself and council members. Council members, y'all have anything you want to announce? Don't everybody speak at once, okay? The holidays are a bonus. Saturday, December the 13th, is that Saturday or Monday, Cynthia? Monday, it's Monday, December 13th, Rome Fire Rescue and Santa sightings will resume again. We've already had some wonderful sites of them in part of Old Town Rome, they're gonna finish our area. Friday, December the 24th, and Monday, December the 27th, city hall offices will be closed in observance of Christmas. That same thing happens on December the 31st in observance of New Year's Day. And Saturday, January the 22nd, which some of you may have something showing the 29th, we hope to have a citizens forum on our facilities, and that's the Saturday from 9 to 11, be here in this room. So we'd like for everybody to come and everybody to bring their friends and neighbors, let's address what we can do to overcome some problems we have. And on a good note, the Rome Veterans Group was recognized on December the 2nd, 2021, as being the Wise County Nonprofit of the Year, and it was presented to the Rome Veterans by the Wise County Chamber of Commerce. Again, remember, this is a group, its motto is veterans helping veterans, so should you see one of them, congratulate them for that. Now we're going to move on to the consent agenda, we have two minutes of city council, one, October the 28th, '21, and November the 15th, '21. Does anybody want to pull anything off, or do I hear a motion, we accept these?
I make a motion, we accept.
Okay, so here, here we go, so we're going to, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, and so we'll have a voice vote. Does everybody want this to be agreed to? Aye. Any, anyone to object? That one doesn't count. Okay, the monthly staff reports and board members. We have reports in the packet for each and every department head, and does anybody want to pull anything specifically off that? If not, I think the police department, we need to hear from the chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council members. We've got a few things to cover tonight, but what I want to start with is I want to introduce to y'all our newest officer, Officer Sid Grant. Comes to us with 20 years law enforcement experience. He, he moved to this closer to us and was looking for a closer department to him, and we are blessed and lucky to have someone with his experience join us. He's already in training and he's teaching the guys a lot of, a lot of new things, so, kidding guys. So I'm gonna bring him up, Sid Grant, Officer Sid Grant.
I just want to say I'm really happy to be here. I've actually looked at Rome, because I live in North Fort Worth, for a while, looking at as a place for me to come, put my roots in until I retire, probably 10, 15 years from now, because I don't like to sit still well. But I think you guys have a great city, great leadership here, and I'm really impressed with the department I've been with, the officers here. So I'm looking forward to a long-lasting finish out here.
Well, thank you for finding us, you know.
Thank you, and I'd like to introduce my wife, Rhonda, she's a school teacher, my daughter Addison, so they're, they're my rock.
Oh, good.
They're big supporters. Thank you.
That was great, so, okay, so since I've been chief, part of my job and what y'all tasked me to do with doing is to review our practices, our procedures, the structure of our organization, and I'm always looking for ways of improving customer service as it pertains to law enforcement. In law enforcement, redundancy is very important, and by redundancy, I mean as it pertains to getting a certain task accomplished, especially at the first-line supervisor level. In order to achieve this particular goal, bifurcation of our department is necessary. That way, we can include a patrol division side and then a criminal investigation slash administrative side, and we have first-line supervision that is redundant throughout the department. That's what we're moving toward. To achieve that goal, we put together a promotional process that was consisted of a written examination, followed by a oral board, that was, the panel consisted of city administrator Northrop, myself, and then I asked council member Ty to be on that panel because of her extensive law enforcement experience. Once we had this process, two officers rose to the top, and tonight, we're going to swear them in before you guys and before the public as new sergeants for the City of Rome Police Department. So, and, and I do want to mention that this is without any detriment to the budget, we're able to promote these two officers to sergeants, thereby gaining the benefits of increased efficiency and a higher level of customer service, both to our internal as well as our external customers, and it will not impact the budget at all, so I'm very excited about that. So I'm going to swear them in now, I'm going to start with no particular order, Officer Rex Ritchie. I'm gonna ask his wife to come up and pin his new badge on. Now, if we could get Officer Aaron Solter to come up. Officer Solter, Sergeant Solter's wife will be pinning him tonight. Mayor and council members, I really appreciate y'all's, appreciate y'all's support. We're in a really good place with our department right now, there's gonna be a lot of growth coming. I think we've got leadership in place at these first-line supervisor level now, and I'm excited about where we're headed. Thank you so much.
Hey, we can all sleep better tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, you know, so we appreciate your efforts, we really do, and all these guys.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we are now going to close our regular meeting again. It is 7:39 December the 9th, and we're going to go to a public hearing, and again, it's 7:39 when the public hearing starts. Elaine, will you be recusing yourself? Okay, Cynthia has it, okay. Okay, the Rome City Council is going to conduct a public hearing to consider a request for two carports. The first one is legal property being acres 423, Lot 9, Block C, subdivision Chisholm Creek PH2, abstract A554J Moffett, also known as 217 Cheyenne Trail North, Rome, Texas, 76078.
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and suggest, why don't you go ahead and conduct two separate hearings, it'll be cleaner for our record. Just go ahead and ask if there's anyone that wants to speak on item number one.
Just go ahead and ask if there's anyone that wants to speak on item number one, and then we'll close it, and then we'll open it for a second, public hearing on the second item.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on item number one?
Mayor, I would let you know that at the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission Meeting on Monday, there was ones that spoke in that public hearing in favor of were the owners, Mike and Becky Gutchen.
Okay. Anyone against? Did you have anyone?
Mayor, this is Shirley Mize, 170 Russell Street, and I'd like to agree or I'm for that carport.
Okay, did y'all all hear that? Okay, we have a call-in that agrees to have the carport.
Mayor, may I ask that name again, please?
Shirley Mize, 170 Russell Street.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here or online that wishes to speak?
Deborah B. Craft.
Yes, Deborah, go ahead.
This is Deborah B. Craft. I would like to say I am for the carport. I think people have a right to have what they need in their own property. I live at 360 West Second. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else actually would be wanting to speak?
No, there it goes, sorry. Okay, looking at the two carports and listening to the city council meeting, I mean the PNC...
Council member, we probably ought to wait and close the hearing on this first item, and then the council can discuss and act on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but actually, which one were you wanting to speak on? The 217 Cheyenne Trail? Okay, would she go ahead, Carmen?
Well, no.
She's not, she's speaking as an individual, not as counsel.
I'm speaking as counsel on this one.
Yeah, as I understand it, I think you ought to go ahead and close the hearing on the first matter, and then the council can deliberate on the first item and take whatever action is needed.
Okay. Per instructions from our attorney, we're going to close this portion of the public meeting, and it is now 7:43. We will reconvene into our regular meeting, and we can have discussions and a vote. And Cynthia, were you going to let them know what the PNC recommended before they vote?
Yes. So, we're gonna, are we gonna, I thought we were going to do the two public hearings and then come back and do the council discussion on each. Okay. Okay. Okay, so, yes, PNC met on Monday night, and they considered this request, and they did, the original, well, they did deny the request, and it did sound like the rationale from the commissioner that made the motion was that it would, there hadn't been one in the community yet, and this would be the first one. And that's what it seemed like the rationale was at PNC, and they did deny it. Now, the original request, as you, just as a reminder, pretty much the requirements for these carports, other than the whole specific use permit and going through that whole process, is making sure that that carport is 10 feet off the side property line and five feet off the front or the back, whichever is appropriate. This was initially 8.1 feet off the side, but the PNC asked, the PNC Chair asked if they would bring it into the 10 feet and into compliance with the ordinance, and the applicant said that they would. So, it would be, it would meet the ordinance as it's written.
Okay, do I hear any discussion or emotion from the council? And again, to let everybody know, Ms. Priest has recused herself.
I would like to discuss on this one after listening, because I was listening to the PNC, and after hearing the resident tonight, and looking over it, there is not any, there's not any other description any compared to the two that we have, only tonight. Any other ones that we have, that has been brought to us in PNC? We have asked for the shingles, the materials, but on this one, it just shows backyard freestanding patio RV cover. I think if it was just left off RV cover, it'd probably be a different situation, but the only thing it just says is color, tan, matches house. But they didn't even put if it's going to be, you know, masonry post, if it's going to have, you know, if it's going to be metal. If, there's nothing that they have described to us that I'm looking over, and then if it, it's very vague, very vague. I mean, I can remember the first time I was even on PNC that we, you know, pretty much harassed a man, been said, okay, it has to be the same colors, your house has to be the same shingles, it has to have everything. And this one here, we're not even, we denied him, and our PNC said, you know, we prefer you to have a metal structure. And I understand, you know, maybe that's it, but I think that we need, it needs to go back to PNC and with the description, and then, you know, then we can make the decision. But listening to, listening to what PNC offered him and then coming, you know, so, it doesn't, he didn't even describe here tonight what he was going to do with it. So, but, I mean.
I've got something to say on this one.
Yes, sir.
I believe, Carmen, correct me if I'm wrong, but recent law changes dictate that we cannot say that they have to give us matching materials to the house. We really can't dictate what that is, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, listening to the PNC discussion, the only basis for denial on this is that it's the first one in the neighborhood, which there's a first for everything. I mean, there's always firsts. So, with the discussion that the chairman had with him, that he would follow the ordinance and bring it within ordinance, then it follows everything that we would require. So, there should be no reason for denial. I don't think just because it's the first is a basis for it. So, I would be inclined to approve this request, being the citizen followed all the rules.
Are you making a motion to approve the challenge?
Not at this point. I'm having discussion, and I think somebody else has something as well.
I, with the freestanding, I'm sorry, I can always hear behind me, so, there's a phone ringing. But with the backyard freestanding, is it a, you know, patio, you know, covered? That's what I was like, okay, is it an RV? That's where it kind of flows, you know, throws you for the loop, you know? Does everybody not have a patio, you know, in their backyard? So, I, I'm up for discussion as well, and it's, so, I want to approve it, so, I think.
Does it violate any ordinances at all?
There's, it complies.
It's in compliance with our ordinance. Okay.
I read through the ordinances, and I listened to the PNC as well. Did any of you listen to the PNC the other night? Okay, I just wanted to know who listened to it as well.
Any more discussion?
Yes. I'm just, just now looked up the definition of carport, because I was looking at the plans that he had for it, that it was going to be detached, and it refers to the definition, an open-sided shelter for an automotive vehicle usually formed by a roof projecting from the side of a building. A roofed structure for automobile storage usually attached to a house and not fully enclosed like a garage, but with at least one side open to the outdoors. What I'm thinking is, he may have applied for the wrong thing, that he may not want this as a carport, but he just wants this as, I don't know, I'm looking for a generic term, just some covered, just some metal covering, what? Yeah, just covered parking, not want to use the term carport. I remember when Carmen gave us a nice long talk on what can and can't be in the carport ordinance, and, you know, we can't require masonry, we can't require color, we can't require, we pretty much can't require anything.
You can require them, you just can't require them different than what the state has approved in the various codes that we have adopted in our ordinances. So, you can't go beyond what's already published in the statewide code.
Right, and the statewide codes don't really have much. So, we can't really require much. I've seen carports that I think are just magnificent, they're attached to a house, they're masonry, it's actually looks like it's part of the house. I looked through my neighborhood, and I've seen significant number of buildings that have gone up, sheds, you know, 30 by 30.
Auxiliary buildings.
Sure, we can call it an auxiliary building. They go up, and as far as I know, they never came before the PNC, and I really hope they came to the city and cut a permit. Okay? Thank you. But, again, it's not, it's not in my neighborhood. We already have some carports in my neighborhood. I, I listened to Cynthia say that we're in violation of no ordinances. I am familiar with, and I believe that Cheyenne Neighborhood has a homeowners association. It does not? I thought it did.
They only have deed restrictions. They don't have a homeowner's.
They have a good community, but it's not natural.
They only have deed restrictions, but we're not, not, we don't have to comply with their deed restrictions, but no homeowners.
So, other than being first, did the PNC have any other justification for denial?
No, sir.
I really, I really hate to go against the recommendation of PNC. We have them there to make decisions, and I hate to go against their recommendations.
This would probably be an appropriate time to remind the council that to overturn a recommendation of the PNC requires a supermajority of the council, which in this case would require four votes, four affirmative votes to overturn the recommendation of the PNC.
Would that be the mayor?
The mayor would, the mayor does not vote.
I didn't know if the mayor would come in and vote for Joe Port.
Cannot, but we do have four people actually here that can vote.
Is it inappropriate, or may I ask? I saw that the, one of our PNC members was on the meeting, I saw his name listed, Chairman of PNC. Is it appropriate for me to ask if there's any other justification or reason?
Steve, Dave, can you hear?
Mr. Knight, I saw your name up there earlier.
Yes, I'm listening into the meeting. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you. Other than being just the first one in the neighborhood, was there any other reason that the PNC voted to deny?
Well, I certainly cannot speak for my other commissioners, because that would be inappropriate of me. I can't speak for myself, which I don't believe would be, I don't believe it's a requirement that we put it in writing as to what our decision-making processes are, it's just whether we make a recommendation or do not. However, I will give you my personal opinion on these carports, if you would like to entertain that.
Please entertain me.
Okay, in, in short, there's, there's a couple of things that went into my mind. One of them being, yes, it is the first one in this specific neighborhood, which is one of our abstract neighborhoods we have in the City of Rome, where people go in there and they buy their properties, and they kind of know what they, they think they know what they can have and what they cannot have. The other thing is the new laws pertaining to the structure itself and what it's made of. History has shown me, as long as I've been on PNC, that we have areas of town where we have allowed a lot of carports. Those carports have been constructed of all sorts of materials, there are several of them there. The other big factor there is these neighborhoods have different property sizes to them. We have neighborhoods in the area that have smaller properties, they have no access to their backyard with a vehicle to get to the backyard with a, with the guidelines, and the only property they have is in front of their house. We have other neighborhoods in this area that have access to their backyard because of their property sizes. That, for me, was one of my deciding factors, was a person that has a property that is in a neighborhood that is large enough to perhaps have access to their backyard could possibly do something like a backyard garage or accessory building or something. That really is what pertained to me, and I didn't know that I needed to make that public when I was making my own decision on how I'm going to vote.
Well, Mr. Knight, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the diagram that I saw shows that it actually is in his backyard. It's in the very far back corner of his property.
Correct. Correct. But the other neighborhoods in this area that do not have that access, and this gentleman was asking for a carport, not a building completely sided. I think the person has multiple opportunities for some other sort of a structure to protect personal property, and that also has a lot to do with my personal opinions, is as a property owner, we do have the right to protect our personal property, and in most cases, carports are there to protect vehicles, not always, but most cases. And in neighborhoods with smaller property, properties that have no backyard access, the only place they can protect their vehicles is in their driveway or in their garage, and in most cases, garages are quite honestly used for storage. So, that's, that's my, that's my thinking. That's only my thinking. I do not speak for my other commissioners, I don't think I need to. And I really don't know that, that it needs to be on public, that we had, I don't think it's anywhere stated, our exact reasons for voting the way we vote. We are a commission of, right now, five people, and, four people, and we made our decision, and we sent a recommendation on to city council, and it's for you folks to decide from here. Any other questions, I'll be glad to answer, but I'm only going to be able to answer for myself.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Thank you.
But isn't each carport at the PNC's discretion? So, each, each item that comes up is...
It's separate.
Separate, so, compared to what he was just saying. So, every item is at their discretion.
They looked at two carports.
Right, but everyone coming forward, depending on what neighborhood is in, it's at their discretion and our discretion if it is approved, so.
I believe you have in your council packet the, the Chapter 14 of the zoning ordinance, and if you look at that second paragraph there of Section 32.5, the very last sentence basically sets out what the standard is. The PNC Commission and the city councils should consider whether the proposed use is compatible with the property and surrounding property, and whether the design and appearance of the proposed use is similar in materials and design to the existing residential structure and its complementary to the existing residential structure on the property or to surrounding properties. So, that's your standard that you get to apply to this situation each time it comes up.
Okay, but, so it has to comply to it, but it doesn't state in here.
Well, the presumption will be that when it comes with a negative recommendation from the PNC, that it did not meet that requirement.
But they didn't even ask him. I listened to it, they didn't ask. I listened to it, they didn't ask him and he didn't say. Right, so he, can he get up and speak and hear what he's going to?
If he's willing to speak.
Are you willing to speak and please describe to us what you want, how you, what you're going to, materials, what it's going to look like, please describe to us.
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for letting me talk. And, and again, I wasn't here to try to convince the council one way or the other. Yeah, yeah, sorry, okay, yeah. Uh, I wasn't trying to convince the council to accept or deny. We accept that, like I had mentioned in my statements. We do have two city officials in our neighborhood, both have opposed. So to try to keep peace in the neighborhood, you know, we'll, we will abide by whatever decision you make. But, but as I mentioned earlier, it would be a very similar structure to what's in the memorial, in the Veterans Memorial Park, it would be a metal structure. It would be onto a carport, well, carport, it's, it's an RV that is parked in the backyard. It would be, it's on concrete. It, part of it would also be a patio, we also have a place that we set back here in the backyard or in the back of our house, our residence. So it would be shared as, as both. But there would be a vehicle, we also have a boat, and that boat would also be parked under it, so, so it would be a metal structure. So based on what the comments were a while ago, it probably does not meet the roof structure of the house. I did not know that was a requirement at the time, so that was my mistake, but.
That's actually my question, because, and again, thank you, Carvin.
Yeah.
As I read, and it says, similar in materials and design to the existing residential structure. What is your residential structure made of?
Well, it's, it's, well, the roof is obviously, it's wood and composition singles, so, the side is, is masonry, it's brick.
And the building you want to build?
The building would be a metal roof on it, the sides would be metal, the floor obviously would be concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be exactly the same.
I understand, I understand, but.
Yeah.
Compatible in use and then similar in appearance are sort of the standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, it is showtime. Do I hear a motion from anyone?
I make a motion that we approve the carport.
And do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. We have to have a full majority, which is four people, to vote all one way or the other. So let's call for a vote.
Hi.
There it goes. Oh, okay. Okay, we're calling for a voice vote, all in favor. All opposed.
Nay.
So we got a two and two, that means I get to break a tie.
No, it has to be a four vote.
Right, but.
You're still not going to give it a four.
Carvin, help me out.
Actually, actually, under the, under the circumstances right now, even if you vote in favor, that will not be enough to create the super majority that is required, so the, the motion fails two to two.
Okay, and can this gentleman bring anything back to P and Z?
Absolutely, he can resubmit.
Maybe something you want to consider, sir. Okay, now we're going to have to close this part of our public hearing.
Mayor, excuse me. Mayor? Excuse me, I didn't get who made the second of that motion, please?
Ashley Majors.
Ashley, thank you.
We weren't in a public hearing, we're going into. We weren't in a public hearing, we were in the regular session.
I'm sorry, you're, you're certainly correct, but we were chopping these up into two different areas. The second one is a carport request, and it is eight oh five, we are moving to that one, it's public hearing, item two. Being legal property being acre zero point one five four, lot forty-eight, block four, subdivision Crown Point PH one, abstract A, two eighty EJ, Tadlock, also known as one sixteen Troxel Boulevard. Seven six oh seven eight. And we're opening the conversation on one sixteen Troxel Boulevard. And Cynthia, can you tell us what the council, the P and Z?
Well, I will when we get to the regular session, but LeAnn does have some public hearing replies that she was going to share for the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, Council, at the P and Z meeting on Monday, we had two that spoke in favor, owners Wesley and Patricia Dingler and Chris Williams, and then one opposed was Marvin Schuh, S C H U H, that spoke against that carport.
Okay, are we ready to talk about one sixteen Troxel? And Cynthia, I am confused, I think we're still in the public hearing.
Right.
We are, and Mayor, if you want to allow anybody in the public to speak right now, this would be the appropriate time.
Okay, anybody here want to speak relative to one sixteen Troxel Boulevard carport? Or anyone online that would like to have a comment?
Mayor, this is Shirley Mize at one seventy Russell. And I'm in favor for that carport as well.
Anyone else?
Deborah B. Kraft, three sixty West Second, I am also in favor of the carport. It's not the first one in the neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, anybody else, anyone here, it's a public meeting, anyone can comment. Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing at eight oh eight PM and move in back into regular session at eight oh eight PM for the December ninth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting. And regular agenda, new business, discussion, and any necessary action regarding the carports. And I think we have, Carvin, we may have kind of messed up.
No, I, I think we're fine, we just need to now have a discussion regarding item two, the carport request
Right.
For lot forty-eight, block four, and then you'll also need to have a same motion and vote on that one to whether accept or, or deny the P and Z's recommendation.
Thank you, okay.
I can go over planning and zoning's recommendation, if you like, Mayor.
Okay.
So this one is that one sixteen Troxel, and it is ten feet off the side. Originally, it was not going to meet the front setback of five feet, but again, the P and Z asked them if they would be willing to, and the requister and owner said yes, and so this one does meet, and so the P and Z recommended approval of this one.
I make a motion, we accept P and Z's approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, just a brief discussion before we vote. Just on these things that have passed in the past, we've had them approved and then a carport not be built for many months and then years have passed. Can we make this, would you be willing to amend your motion to say, as long as he builds it within six months?
How long do we have that line?
I believe they have to build it within ninety days.
That's already part of the ordinance requirement.
Okay, okay.
We got ninety days, and that's better for you.
Even better, thank you.
Because if not, they lose their money on their permit.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Y'all ready to call for a vote, or is there any more discussion? Okay, let's hear a voice vote for.
Hi.
A voice vote against. Okay, so that one passes. Now we're moving on to something maybe not quite as complicated. Um, the thing. Let's go on to item K. Cynthia, this has you down, it's for recognition of the fourth quarter Shana Awards.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, our Shana Awards are really recognizing our employees that are upholding and exhibiting the goals that we have for all of our employees, and that is sincerity, and that's commitment to public service, honesty, building trust, integrity, holding to high standards, neighborly, helpful, friendly, and kind, and excellence, and that's high quality service and attitude. So I'm happy to be able to say that Shayna Odom was selected by her peers for this award, and Shayna Odom is the Shana Awardee for the fourth quarter. She's been with the city of Rome for two years and has done an admirable job, she is a quick learner, team player, and takes, takes on tasks assigned wholeheartedly. Like many in the city of Rome, Shayna wears many hats and has been cross-trained across several jobs within city hall. Most recently, with the resignation of the city secretary, she stepped up to the plate and has filled in the gap during that transition, no questions asked. As a result of being cross-trained, Shayna was positioned to be able to take on those additional tasks, and she willingly and happily did so. So we appreciate you, Shayna, for your dedication to the city of Rome, continuing to be a wonderful team player, and willingly taking on these additional tasks. I believe she may be on the line. Shayna, are you on the line, or?
Yeah, I'm here, thank you, I appreciate it, and I also enjoy being a part of the city of Rome.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Let's give her a hand, even though she's not here.
Thank you.
It looks like half the other stuff is you. Discussion and necessary action regarding engaging the auditor for twenty twenty-one.
Mayor, you have in your packet that agenda commentary, we do have Bill Spoor here tonight, so I was actually going to let him come and explain what's going on, and we also have, I believe it's Valerie Halverson on the line with the, the, the other group that we are proposing to perform this audit. Bill, do you want to, I, I have briefed the council on this, in this agenda packet, but do you want to come up and, and talk about why we're kind of splitting out this and doing a partnership on, on this audit?
Thank you, Council, for having me here this evening. I'm kind of going into semi-retirement, and I've worked out an agreement with another CPA firm that specializes in local government audits, and we're kind of dividing the audit into two pieces. There's always been a kind of a bookkeeping piece, which is getting the records ready to be audited, and then the audit piece. So for the next year, our proposal is that I'll do the bookkeeping piece, so I'll still be involved, and then the audit firm will come in after I'm done, and they'll do the actual audit. And so the audit report will be on their letterhead and their name, things like that. In my opinion, this is a way to transition away from me without me just walking off into the sunset and leaving you.
And that will appreciate you, you know.
And the proposal is the total fee between the two of us will be, won't be more than fourteen thousand. I think last year's fee, I think it was twelve thousand.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah. So I can go into more detail if you want more detail, but I'll basically just, I'll get everything ready for them to come audit, and they'll come audit.
Well, and we would like to say this, in case we don't see you again, enjoy your retirement. I highly recommend.
I started today because I wore my jeans.
Oh, okay. We do appreciate it. Does anybody have any comments for Bill?
Valerie is on the line, if you have any. Valerie, if you want to introduce yourself.
Yes, hi, I'm Valerie Halverson, I'm a shareholder at NWH Group in Wichita Falls. I run our governmental and yellow book audits, and I've been in public accounting for thirteen years, and was excited to be able to work with Bill on this, and would be happy to answer any questions about myself or about our firm, but we're excited to be here in front of you, thank you.
We're looking forward, Valerie, so hope you can feel Bill's footsteps.
I, we will, we'll try, but we're happy to have Bill be on our team for a little bit.
They're actually my peer reviewers, that's how I know them. I can attest to their technical skills.
So what I would need is for you all to authorize me to, there would be two letters of engagement, so one would be with Mr. Spoor, and one would be with the NWH Group.
Do I have here a motion that we authorize city administrator to go forward with this?
I'll make that motion for you, Cynthia.
And second?
I'll make it. Anybody, I'll make a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we're going to call for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill, I think it works.
All right.
You know, so we appreciate your coming tonight.
I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much, I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, now we're moving on to item M, discussion and any necessary action regarding sewer rates and winter averaging on wastewater billing, city administrator.
Mayor, this is actually, council member Majors requested this, we do have Chris Eckert here to speak on this item, he's got a PowerPoint, and he will be able to answer any questions you all have. Chris, if you want to come on up?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chris Eckert with New Gen Strategies and Solutions. I have to say, it's a pleasure to be here personally with you tonight, I've only seen you via a computer screen before, so it, so it really is nice to be here. Just a very brief presentation I want to run through, just kind of recapping where we've been, what we've been through, talk a little bit about winter averaging, potential rate design changes, then I'm happy to answer any questions, engage in a discussion with you relative to changes you may want to see going forward. Before I jump into that, though, I think every presentation I've given to you, I've started with some of these same statements. As you sit here tonight, you are not just a city council, you are the board of directors of the business. When we look at the water and sewer utility, it is tracked in an enterprise fund, it is a business-type activity of government. So again, I'm going to ask you, take your council hat on, put your board of directors hat on, because that's what, that's what we are, we are a business. For a business to be successful, revenues have to match or exceed expenses, we have to reinvest in our business, and we have to plan for a rainy day. And so that's really what the recent rate action was all about, yes, sir?
I just want to make sure you didn't just misspeak, you said, take your council hat on.
Take your council hat off, sorry, put your board of directors hat on.
Okay, um, okay, I'll, I have other comments, but I just wanted to check.
Yes, sir, I apologize for that. So with that said, moving on, I want to go back through some of the issues that you still face as a business that ultimately led to the recent rate action, and this is on the next slide, where, where we just kind of recap some of these. Again, it's already been said tonight, prior to the recent sewer rate action, the last time we had raised sewer rates was nineteen ninety-nine. So we had, we did have some ground that we had to make up. As we talked about last time, I always recommend that councils take action on rates every year, every other year, or more frequently in small increments. We were not in that situation at this time. So going forward, I highly recommend small incremental rate action every year, every other year, just to keep up with inflation, keep up with the cost increases that you see within your business. We do have growth coming, we do have economic development happening, we have to develop our infrastructure, repair, replace our infrastructure to support that growth, support the, the economic development. Why did we need the recent rate increases? It's really driven primarily by capital improvements. When you look, and, and we've got a slide on this in just a second, when you look at the capital needs on the wastewater side, specifically the wastewater plant rehabilitation, that's what we're facing, that's what we have to fund. You'll notice when we get You'll notice, when we get to the slide here in just a second, we're proposing that you issue debt, use debt to fund that asset, but we can't issue the debt if we can't prove that we can pay the debt back. That means we had to adjust rates so that we can begin to go through and engage in these, in these improvements that are needed. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry to interrupt again. You start using words like "prove." "Prove" is a very powerful word in my vocabulary. And so I need to direct to this question, Carvin. When we talk about changing the rates, the rates are changed right now, we think of it as potentially on an annual basis. Now, when we changed the rates originally, then we made it to a point where we could meet our financial needs to prove that we could pay this loan. Now, if we were to reduce the rate this year and come up with something that was incremental, would we be able to, if you will, force the rate up so that we could legally prove, force the rate up in the next two, three years, so that we could legally, use the word "prove", that we could pay off this debt?
Well, Chris and I are going to tag-team this. I know it feels like a legal question, but it's not using the word "proof" in the legal context. Chris, I'll defer to you, but what you're really doing is satisfying the bankers. If you satisfy the bankers, that is proof. So whatever it takes to satisfy them from their economic analysis in their back room with their calculators, that is what the proof is required. Is that a fair way of putting it?
You only addressed part of my question. The rest of it is, to satisfy the bankers, we've got to say that we're going to eventually have that rate actually to where we put it, okay? But the thing is, is there a way that this council can guarantee that in three years or four years, that that rate will be there? Or this council can only say, "We're going to stay with the rate is today"?
Well, and again, I'm going to defer to Chris a little bit, but obviously, if we issue bonds, we will be bound by the indenture documents that we published. And so representations that we've made to the eventual purchasers, we're bound by. But in terms of what you can do and bind yourself in terms of what this council can do, obviously, a future council can change those things. But we're only going to do that in consultation with our advisors as to what makes economic sense, and if we can't convince the bond folks to issue bonds, if they don't find us reliable, or they don't trust our numbers, then we're not going to be able to issue bonds. So we do all that in consultation with the one that can help us generate the numbers that will satisfy those bankers or financiers.
Cynthia, have we already issued the revenue bonds for?
No, we have not. I mean, you guys have already proved the rates based on the calculations that he's done, but we have not. We're working on that, but we have not.
So as we talk, I'm sorry. I apologize. So as we talk about those capital improvements, and we did talk about this when we took rate action, it's important to note that this type of capital improvement is driven by the regulatory agency. This is not an optional action. The city has already faced fines and fees from the TCEQ, because you have been in instances when you've been in violation of the regulations. And so you could choose to not undertake the capital improvements, not fund the capital improvements, not adjust the rates. But the effect of that is that the regulators would come in, they would fine you, and then they would force you to take the action. And so that's why it's important, as we, as we look at this, to understand that this is, this is not, this is, this is not an optional action in terms of making these capital improvements. You have to meet the regulatory requirements. That's a legal obligation. As a water and sewer provider, you have legal obligations you must meet, and that's one of the main drivers within this study. Was those capital improvements necessary to meet those regulatory requirements? Any questions on that?
I had put my business hat on when I originally voted to have those rates.
Yes, sir.
Where they are. The thing is, reality is, you cannot only have the business hat on. We are a city council. We have to think like a city council. We have to think in terms of the businesses we're impacting. I know that it's very difficult to swallow, you know, when all of a sudden your water bill goes up by over 100%. It's difficult for a business to survive that kind of an impact. I mean, I'm looking across the room, and I see a business owner, and she'd probably go crazy if all of a sudden the cost of something went up over 100%. So we want to satisfy the bankers.
Yes, sir.
I don't know the bankers. If we went for some type of progressive over three years, is that something that can satisfy the bankers to get the loan?
In my experience, in adjusting rates and working with financial advisors, what the bankers are going to want to see is a pro forma document that says that you are generating sufficient revenue to cover the debt obligation that you are about to issue. That's my experience. When you look at revenue bonds in particular, there is, those also typically carry what's called a debt coverage requirement, where in that pro forma document, you have to prove not only that you can cover the debt obligation, but there's also an incremental amount over and above the debt obligation that you can meet every year. So generally, that coverage requirement's about 1.25 times. We won't know until we get to the point that we are looking at the bond, what the bond indenture is, what the financial advisor brings to you. But again, it's my experience that most likely, you are not going to be able to issue the debt without being able to financially prove at the time that you can make the required debt payment. Again, I am not a financial advisor, so I'm on the rate side. So there could be some instance out there where a financial advisor could somehow work with a bank, somehow structure debt that could achieve that. I personally, standing, standing here tonight, am not aware of that.
Mr. Atkins, are you aware of that, this pro forma document to which he refers? Could we do it with the increased rate?
Well, I'm not your financial advisor either, and we do have financial advisors on retainer for the city, and so we would, we will all work together to try and put together a package that the city can live with.
This is hurting our businesses, listening to Cindy, and I was, I have been, I've had two businesses reach out to me, and one of them, it's almost as much as their mortgage. And, you know, they, this is what we survive on, and they're going to close up shop and move out of town. We don't even have businesses that are moving into town. And what we're doing to them because the rate increased, and one of them is a major business that we need, and when I was told by that person that it's almost as much as their mortgage, we didn't think about the business. We didn't. So we need to reconsider what we did, and one of them that she read off is one that reached out to me. And when I sat down with the person, I was shocked to listen to what the water was. So, and especially since, you know, what you're, what y'all are going and trying to reach out to them and read, you know, send the letters with your, you know, economic development. I didn't know if they sent back to you and spoke to you about it, but it's not the best time, you know? It wasn't the best time. So I don't know what we can do as a council and putting on our business hats, but I think that we need to see what we can do going forward.
I would like to make a comment, if you don't mind. I, I do think it's the right time. You know, there, there were, in your earlier presentations, there was a number that was in the blank of, about how the increase would affect businesses. And of course, it was a projection and, and everything. And so what we've learned now in actuality is the reality of the action that we have taken. And so I do think that as we begin our conversations and input from our businesses on all levels, that it does directly affect the economic development that we're all interested in. And so it does, those increases and those implications do play a role in that. And of course, it's all, it's all relative. It's all related to each other. And so it is good timing that our businesses have, businesses have come to us and said, "Gosh, that's not anywhere near what we saw in the presentation. It's 100% more than what we saw in the presentation," for some of them. So I do think that it's important. I do think the timing is good. It's, it's new conversation for all of us, and so I, I do think, following Sam's train of thought over here, that, okay, this is the reality of it, and we have to look at the reality, we have to reassess, we have to look for the win-win, and we've got on retainer those folks that work on the win-win for us, whether it's the financial, or the legal, or the rate, or, and then the service aspect of it as well. So I, I do think the timing is good, and I think that, that if we all work together, keep an open mind, and of course, you know me, if we get outside the box, I'm, I'm, I'm the one that's always volunteers to get outside of the box, then that's what we need to do. But we shouldn't shy away from this particular subject or this situation that we find ourselves in. And I appreciate you speaking up, bringing it, you know, right, right in, because it was at our economic development initial meeting, you know, it has direct impact on all of that. And so I appreciate, you know, your bravery in, in doing that. And, and you're in a position where you not only represent you directly, but all the other properties that you work with, you know, you, you cover a wide variety of the businesses in that particular area. So we have a lot of information then to help us.
I like how, sorry, just one second. And I like how you said, too, that it, it just happened overnight. It just didn't hap, happen step by step. So I wish we could have worked with you more, and thank you for, you know, bringing, as she said, all of the businesses, bringing it to our attention, because all of you do help us, and we appreciate every single one of you in our community.
The other, the other thing is, this is a lesson learned for the city council and for the city. If we do not invest in our infrastructure every single year, then we are a mess for the future. 1999 to 2021, no investment in our wastewater system with $220,000 of fines. And, oh, sorry. So we have a huge responsibility to make sure, and I know the city, a lot of citizens stay honest about spending money. We're trying to make up for years of neglect, and, and it costs money. It does cost money. It's, it's an uncomfortable position to be in, but we have that responsibility, and we have to live up to it. Okay, you can stop.
You're on mute.
I think everyone here understands, but we may have a few that do not. The revenue bond is paid for, and you can't make a profit with water, but it's the excess money, whatever you want to call it, that has to pay on that revenue bond. So there is a point of no return. It's some point that you're not having enough to pay on your bond. Right. Right. Anybody else with a question for this gentleman?
I think we've got, I think we've gotten to the point, like, we're going to have to go to what Carvin suggested of, we need to consult with our financial advisor, and that financial advisor needs to be able to counsel us, one, on how we're going to get where we need to be to pay for what we're obligated to pay by the TCEQ, and that financial advisor needs to understand that it's not just a business hat that we wear, it's a council hat that we wear, and we have to consider our businesses in town. And so we need to ask for magic, we need to ask for creative thinking, maybe we need to ask for, go to the bankers and say, "What can you live with? I mean, what can we do to get that bond?" Right? Can we say, I mean, say we're, we're charging X now, but yet, next year, we charge 1/3, then 2/3, then we charge X, and because we were down those first two years, it may have to end up being X plus 5. Right? I mean, in order to pay that debt. I, I realize, you take it off the front end, you're going to have to come up with it on the back end. So I'm going to recommend to the council that we authorize them to go come up with some creative thinking to get us to a solution.
Can we let him finish first?
I thought he was finished.
No.
No, he said, "Are there any more questions?"
We cannot hear the gentleman speaking on the mic. I'm sorry, but citizens cannot understand or hear the gentleman speaking on the mic. I'm sorry, but citizens cannot understand or hear the gentleman speaking on the mic.
Yes, you must have technical difficulties. We cannot hear him. Thank you.
Seriously, is that, you know, same way with sewer, our water rate has not, from my understanding, not increased since 2017. And that was a pass-through fee from Walnut Creek. So Walnut Creek increased us by a few cents. We only passed that through. Again, been 2017, I don't know when previous to that. You know, parts material, chemicals and all this stuff, your gasoline's increased, what, 125% already this year. We incur that same cost, how are we going to pay for that? The same way with materials, sewer lines and all this stuff, we have to pay those materials. So we have to be able to create revenue to pay that stuff off. We all know that the, our sewer plants and all this stuff have violations and all this stuff. From 1999 to 2016, I found over $100,000 worth of violations. And that, no, it's not just all sewer, it could be the sewers war, but I did find something on TCEQ that we paid over $100,000 plus in violations. So we have to take that consideration is that we know the west plant needs work. We know that our infrastructure underneath ground needs work. The longer we put it off, the higher the cost increase. And so if we put it off another two years to replace this, that possibly means more fines for TCEQ. Okay? And then price of materials and cost is going to go up. And so then our rates are going to go up to cover that increase of material projects. So we have to, we still have to cover these projects with these rates if we keep kicking the can down the street as we have for 21 years or longer. This is where we're at. So we also have to consider what we have to do. We have environmental responsibility. If we don't take care of it, we will be in trouble. Because again, if we don't take care of it, the state will say, you're going to do it no matter what. And then if we don't have that revenue to cover it, we're going to have to figure out a way to do it.
John, I very much appreciate what you're saying. We have, we know we have to do it. And I'm just asking, can we talk to our financial officer, our financial advisor, excuse me, and find some magic method to buy a little bit of time over a couple of years, maybe three years for our businesses? But I think you've listened here tonight. Those rates are going to be there. There's no question. If they can come up with some kind of a miracle, okay, then they might be able to buy you a year or two or three. You understand? But all we can do is we can ask them to see if they can find a miracle. That's really what I'm hearing right now.
Well, and let me just interject. I mean, yes, I can call John Martin, but what's, I mean, just common sense, and I'm not the financial guy, right? But what I will tell you that if this is the bubble, if we're just going to push it down, then that bubble's just going to get bigger over a shorter period of time. So there may be some things that he can do. And certainly we'll get with him and work with him, get with Chris and try to come up with some magic. But at the end of the day, these are projects that have to get done and how we can, yeah.
No question, they have to get done.
Okay.
I'm not trying to say they don't. I'm just saying, is there some, I mean, finance guys? I'm sorry, you're talking about pieces of pie and you make it sound really simple. You talk about pieces of pie and you make it sound really simple, but there's a lot of black magic that goes into it. Okay? I understand that. There's, I don't know what you want to call it, creative financing, but just, there are options.
Think of it in words, capitalized letters.
Sure. Okay? I'm just saying, we know we have to do these things. Okay? We've got our business hat on. We know those things have to be done. I'm just saying, for now, leave the rate where it is today. There's nothing we can do about it today. I believe though, that we can ask, is there something we can do about it next month?
Well, and maybe, and God forbid, could we consider a longer bond, as you're looking at X years, but another five years help on the immediate hit for the businesses and the residential.
All right, we'll get with him and we'll, you know, we'll see what options are out there and, you know, how he can, you know, finagle those numbers. I just, you know, yes, we'll get with him. Let us just get with him and get with Chris and internally see what we can do.
Couple of questions. Did you receive, is there any other businesses that have reached out to you as well or just Cindy?
Yeah, no, this afternoon, I got an email from JTS, Marty over at JTS.
Jordan Trucks. Did you read something from him as well? Okay. Didn't know if we needed to read his. We had one more also complete, I guess, as well. So we had another business, so I'm just letting you know because that's another one that's reached out to me. But now, remind me, is it by the usage or is it also the meters?
Well, it's, so your sewer rate design, it's both. There's a fixed charge for commercial, there's a fixed charge based on the meter size, and then there is a rate that is charged, that is applied to the volumes.
Okay. So I don't know if we could also address maybe some of the businesses, you know, say if it's a small business, say if it's, I don't know, say if it's one of her business, she has a large, you know, meter size, I don't know, maybe we could go and look at, maybe that could help, you know? I'm looking at all options to help.
Absolutely. That is, that is policy of council. But again, I'll remind you, if we don't get the revenue from one side, we got to get it from the other.
We got to get it from others. But again, these are our businesses. They're the ones that are getting the revenue for us. So, hey, I don't want to leave it down. We need all the ones coming into town. So, back to, next one is also to the sewer for the winter rate average. So can you go over that again? Because we kind of got sidetracked and.
Okay, so, so again.
Will you please go over that one with me again, please?
Yes, two, two ways to bill for sewer. One is based on actual water use up to a cap. A secondary method is to use winter averaging. And again, I'm referring to residential customers here. The industry standard method for billing commercial is all water use, not to winter average for commercial. Winter averaging only applies to residential. The winter average is, again, a three, four-month average. That sets a value that is then the billed volume amount every month for the next 12 months. So, but again, under winter averaging, typically you're billing less volumes overall. So if my numerator doesn't change, my denominator goes down, my rate has to go up. So the ultimate impact to that is some residents will pay more than they're paying today under the current method, some will pay less. Okay? Does that make sense? Questions on that? Okay.
So, for instance, my water bill this last month was $150. So my average was almost $50 for my sewer. So please tell me, give me an estimate.
I have no idea.
So you don't know what it would be for the winter rate? So, okay. Just kind of, just kind of giving it out there, just to. Okay. Gotcha. I was just trying to give everybody a, all right. Okay, just trying to help everybody out, see what it would be. All right, thank you.
Cynthia, is there a cap on that now? Do we have a cap? We do. Is it 130 around?
But there is a, is a cap on the bill right now. On the sewer bill, yes.
Anybody else with any questions for this gentleman?
The reason why I brought that back up with the winner, because we had a resident, the last council meeting, that was concerned with filling up his pool, which I think we only have an average of about 25 swimming pools. So that was his concern. So that was one of them, is to what we would possibly do for council is, you know, for the resident, that resident that would want to fill up their swimming pool on what might happen.
Well, there's a cap. That's what cap's for. Okay? So we do take that into consideration, is that there is a cap, you know? So that's, and so we're in core average that there's a cap.
Unless you're going to, unless you're going to fill your pool during the winter. Just got to put that out there, we do live in Texas, so.
Hey, it's 80 degrees outside like she just said.
Anybody else? This is kind of unorthodox, but Cynthia, you got any new questions or anything that have come up? Anyone else? We thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to item N, discussion and any necessary action regarding appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Cynthia, I think you have an application.
Yes, we have, Roland Coleman has resubmitted his application to be on P&amp;Z. He served prior. And so he is willing to serve again. As you know, we had a resignation with Sarah Hawes.
Do I hear a motion that we accept him for the P&amp;Z or any discussion?
I make a motion that we accept.
Do I hear a second? Elaine seconded. We're going to call for a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any negative, any? No, okay, so Roland gets the job again. The next one is something I asked to be put on there, and it's discussion and any necessary action regarding the location slash timing of the executive session. As you know, we used to have executive session at the end. And then to assist some of our people that call in later, we decide, okay, we'll have it at 6 o'clock. Well, what that has kind of done, and maybe it should be for a good reason, we don't get all the way through executive session, and then we have to go back and pick up later on. My recommendation is to move it to the end of the council meeting again. And maybe we can still open a council meeting at 6 o'clock, maybe y'all rather have 7. Could we have some discussion? Sam, I think you wanted it moved up front early on.
I said move it up front as just an idea. My objective is that you don't have citizens having to sit and wait on us. Okay? Because if you put it at the end, to me, that inconveniences the citizens the most. Because whether they're present or they're at home, watching online, they now have to sit and wait and wait and wait. And then they finally, after executive session's over, they find out if we have any actions as a result. So I suggested we go, we meet an hour early, hoping that we could at least be concise enough in our deliberations to do it in an hour. We came close today.
Yeah.
Okay? We came close today.
15 minutes doesn't count.
I'm sorry?
15 minutes doesn't count. We almost got there.
Yeah, I'm thinking we had a chief financial officer right there, and he'd say 15 minutes means a lot. I've got an attorney right there and tell you 15 minutes means a lot too.
Oh, okay.
So again, if we do it at the end of the meeting, that's actually more convenient for me. Because I get, I come when the meeting starts and I just stay till it's over. But the thing is, I'm involved the whole time. For the citizen that has to wait, and they don't even know if they're going to be able to get back onto a meeting online. And so we don't know if they can get online because they don't know when it's over, they don't know when to check. So to me, doing it at the end doesn't help them at all. In fact, that's going to make it very difficult for them to participate in the decision made at the end. So again, I don't insist on 6. I'm just saying, that was an idea that I came up with, and it seemed to be reasonable.
What do y'all?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Josh, what do you have to thought?
I agree with what Sam's saying. It doesn't make sense to make people sit here and wait while we're in executive session. It could be 10 minutes, it could be two hours like we've had before. I think having it up front, we as a council just need to work a little more diligently to make sure we're done within that hour. So I think we just need to leave it where it is.
Good.
Either way, I'm fine with. I just, I don't think you're going to make everybody happy. There's no way. So people are going to be mad, whether you have it at the beginning or the end of the meeting. So I, I'll go with whatever.
Whatever. Elaine?
I agree, you know, that I'm open, it works for me either way. I think that we do our best to keep it within that hour, but if it's really something that's important and we need to go back after the meeting to wrap things up, it does kind of break up the conversation and, you know, that could be inconvenient for the process that we were trying to work through. But that is a backup, you know? We could go back in to executive session if we really had business we needed to take care of. It is a long time to wait. You know, we did have that one that lasted seven hours.
That isn't going to happen.
We finished at 2 o'clock in the morning. I'm sure everybody went to bed and didn't wait up on us.
And Ashley, do you have comments?
Could we start? I was not, I mean, I don't know everybody's work schedule, but could we start at 5:30 even, just to give us, I don't know what.
I think if we started at 5:30, and this is just my opinion, a lot of people would not be able to log on.
Well, I don't know for executive session. I'm saying for our executive session.
Then maybe they could come on at 7, give us an extra.
You can't get here by then, right?
Problem is, if I have to work over, then I'm going to have to. And I want to leave that cushion so that I have that time to get here on time.
By 6.
Well, and I think, Josh, it's cutting it close for you too, isn't it?
Well, then how about we start executive session at 6 and we don't start the council meeting till 7:30?
Oh, that's cutting it late, no.
Why?
Oh, for families.
Let's, let's, why don't we go this direction? Keep it at 6, and we will end executive session at 7, no matter if we have hours to go. And then after the meeting, the regular meeting, we will resume executive session. But if we could say at 7, we're going to be back in regular meeting. We've been a little bit late for most of the time getting out here, and tonight we had a. And tonight, we had a room full. What, what does that do to y'all? That sounds fine with me.
I think I'm gonna get a little more obnoxious in executive session, get people on topic and move it.
That works, you know.
So I'm just gonna be upfront with that.
We'll try to control Sam if we can.
More obnoxious?
Yep.
I'm all in favor for us starting...
Anybody else with a comment?
No, let's keep it this way.
Okay, let's go ahead at 6:00 with executive session. No matter where we are, how bloody it is, or whatever, at 7:00, we will come back out here. And hopefully, we don't have to return to executive session. Okay, we're gonna move on to future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? Only thing I have is Cynthia pursue collecting dollars due from Casa Taco once they sell their property. We have $15,000 that is... Whatever, we'll read in company.
I didn't hear that.
Okay, there was an agreement made when Taco Casa was built.
Okay.
And that, I don't remember what it was, there were some, you don't have to meet certain things, but you have to pay us $15,000 when you sell your extra piece of land. It's my understanding that land is going to go to QT. Now, whether it has gone or for its own contingency, but when it actually changes hands, they owe us, and you probably have a copy of the contract somewhere, $15,000.
I hadn't heard of this, but I will look for it.
Okay, good. So that, we'll put it on the next agenda. Anybody else?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Yeah, second. Go.